We're getting close to nine, a little over, so if we can get those gathered here to get ready here. It's the one-minute warning. Okay, we got, uh, all right. Uh, good morning, everybody. It is 9:02. We are going to call the July 28th meeting of the Douglas County Board of Equalization to order. I would like everybody to please stand for a, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the audience, I'd like to note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, if anybody needs to read that. And with that, I'd like to, um, call the Board of Equalization meeting to order with roll call.
Good morning, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Borgeson, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, July 21st, 2015. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, August 4th, 2015, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting additional amended properties. Is there a motion?
Second.
There's motion in the second, roll call. I mean, uh, everyone, please vote. Citizens' comments. This is the time for citizens that may have comments not listed on the official Douglas County Board of Equalization agenda to make, um, to address the board. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
Yes.
Please come to the microphone, please. And your item's not on the agenda? Okay.
I, I think you're, you're on the agenda, aren't you?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Fine, maybe not.
You have three minutes.
Okay, take it fast. Uh, good morning, uh, my name's Corky Buehl. I am, um, from the world-famous Green Meadows subdivision. Um, I'm wearing about three different hats today. I'm the chairman of our SID. Not really here for that. I'm here, um, representing myself and other people. Um, obviously, it's, but we've been a real mess. In our SID, it was divided into quadrants. We did one area of improvement, and the other three are unimproved and unbuildable at this time. Um, we received notices, just a little quick history. Properties, most of it been valued around 20 cents a square foot. Um, mine personally went up overnight over 1,000 percent, which was shocking, uh, to 15,000 per lot. 75,000 total. That was $3.80 a square foot. Same number that's at Champions and at, uh, Lynn and Estates. Got a notice, came back and said, okay, we're gonna change everything, and everything's gonna go to 80 cents. 80 cents, obviously, is more palatable than $3.80, but yet, it's still not equal in that there's areas in Sunridge and Nelson's Creek that are valued at 80 cents. They have all the improvements. They don't probably use the same guy to pump their septic tank that I do, to fill my propane tank. They don't have to call the county to beg for rock to put on the road so my garbage van that I hire can come haul my trash away. We're, we're in an odd situation, and it's difficult. Um, we're not at 80 cents, and yet, that's kind of the number we're given. I don't think we really have much choice on that. From an SID standpoint, we obviously need the revenue we're building. We've got seven houses under construction. We're gonna start another phase of development. Things are good that way. Right now, at the 80 cents, that's not a real number either.
Can I interrupt you real quick, sir? Your item is number, this is number C. Okay, your, your item is coming up. You're on the agenda. So if, if you wanna just hold off.
I didn't see it. I'm sorry, where?
The next item coming up. So if you wanna just hold off one minute before you dig in.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'll catch my breath.
You have three minutes this way. You're fine. With that, uh, anybody wanting to comment on anything not officially on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions, and Item C, the correction of values for properties that are undervalued or overvalued. So, um, sir, let me ask my, uh, the assessor's office to set the tone for it, and then you'll have the time you wanted to go to deal with it.
Perfect, thank you.
Good morning and good luck, Mike.
Good, uh, good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. I would need luck less if, uh, one of, uh, one of you were not ginning these fine folks up like nobody's business.
They're my constituents.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I'm not even gonna go there. Um, there's a little bit of backstory to try and get everybody up to speed. Uh, my understanding is that, uh, the outgoing, uh, field deputy, uh, redid the values on, uh, the lots in Green Meadows, and he had, we had several sales that were sort of aberrational. They were kind of assemblages of multiple lots, where people were, uh, paying a, a, a pretty high premium to be able to do that. And so, uh, uh, he went ahead and, and raised the values of, of all the lots in, in Green Meadows by, by quite a substantial amount. Uh, when the new administration and new field deputy came in, uh, we fielded an awful lot of calls from folks out there asking us to look into the matter. And so, we did. And upon reviewing the sales, what we were seeing is, yes, there were a few aberrational sales, uh, but the majority of them seemed to be much less. Um, and when we narrowed it down to the sales that we viewed as, as, uh, pretty much arms-length transactions, what we were seeing is a figure of 80 cents a square foot. Was what they seemed to be going for in the marketplace. Now, Green Meadows is, uh...
Corky, was it?
All right. Um, Green Meadows is a little aberrational in the sense that you have some that have had the paving and, and are getting to the point where you could build on them, and others that were not. We narrowed down the 80 cents a square foot. The ones we're doing the corrections for today are the ones that are not that far yet. They're the unbuildable pieces. We broke it into, uh, uh, sort of two neighborhoods. But in any event, what, what we derived was, uh, a number, uh, that we were seeing from arms-length sales of similar properties. And so, we took advantage of this, uh, overvalued, undervalued mechanism, uh, to be able to correct, uh, the whole neighborhood in bulk, uh, rather than rely on some folks to file protests and some folks not. Because when you see a volume of properties like this, yeah, there'll be people that file protests, and they'll probably be okay. There are other people that, for whatever reason, don't. And then you end up with a real hodgepodge of the old values, and then some that have been corrected by the referees. Um, and so, then you really have a mess. So what we've tried to do today, uh, is provide, uh, a list, uh, of the properties that we think are affected in this manner, uh, and are proposing, uh, new, uh, corrected values based on that 80 square, uh, 80 cents a square foot figure, uh, that we're seeing in the marketplace. Um, so that's the backstory. Um, and so, I don't know if you'd, uh, you'd like to, uh, if you'd like to resume?
Sure.
Fine. Okay.
Thank you.
So, sir, can you restate, state your name and address again for the record?
Certainly. Uh, Corky Buehl, uh, address 13828 Burdette Street, Omaha, obviously, Green Meadows. Um, again, part of the reason that you're seeing that, uh, valuation that's coming in, or the sale price at 80 cents, we were all assessed for, um, installation of city water to all those lots. Those were, they came out about $5,000 a lot. On these lots that are typically 60 by 110 lots, that's where the equation comes up. People dumped the properties because they're second and third generation. Now, there's nothing you can do with them. You can't build. We still don't. There's a building moratorium, uh, until there's paving and sewer, uh, they won't issue any building permits. That's what's established that value. It's more of a tax than an assessment, because it added no value. I can't tap the water that's in front of my house. Doesn't do me any good. I can't build, I can't do anything. So the, the $5,000 price that the lots are selling for is just, um, making people hole on the assessments that they had to pay on those lots. That's kind of where that number comes from. They, other than that, there really isn't anything you can do with them. Investment purposes, there's been a few people that thought they saw a fat cow. Um, it's not there. They, there's, some of them got burned really bad. Anyway, we know it's a mess. Everything about Green Meadows, every check and balance that's ever been put in place to keep things like us from happening for the last 50 years, has happened. I am, I've been there since I was three. I'm the oldest, longest-living resident there that's, uh, I've seen it go through every phase and been involved. Yeah, it's pretty much me. Yeah, fat, bald guy, it's up to me. Uh, yeah. So anyway, going forward, again, we're at equalization, and, and we're getting closer. We're there, I still look up, I, I punch a number, and I find, uh, this lot is valued at 50 cents, this value's at 80 cents. You can't tell the difference, they're side by side. We're over a 50 percent differential. That doesn't make sense to me. I don't know how that can happen. Uh, we get some others that, that are, are still out of whack, but we're getting closer. Again, it's a more palatable number. Is it fair? Not necessarily, 'cause it has no value. I've got a lot of, because my name and number's been around so many years, in second and third generation, and like you said, there's people, for a lot of reasons, that can't. Seems like every old widow calls me crying, and she doesn't have a computer to download a form. She has no way to come down and protest. She's afraid to fight the government. And, you know, so they don't do it. So they call and go, what do I do? She said, I just soon, I, I've got one lady, says, I just wanna give it away. I can't pay the taxes, I can't afford it, I don't, it has no value. Do you want it? And unfortunately, I said, no, I really don't. I don't wanna have to pay the taxes on a $5,000 piece of property that, again, it's not a lot, couple hundred bucks a year or something, but for what purpose? It could be another 10 years before that's ever developed. I don't know that yet. Again, we're ready to start another phase of development from an SID hat that I'm wearing now. Uh, but we're not to that phase yet, and when we do, it probably won't be another quadrant. It'll be divisional. Our fiscal agent is gonna give an approval to do a block-by-block development, which is gonna be more conducive for everybody. So, um, I could go on, but I, I won't. The one other equalization thing. Um, had a guy bought three lots, $25,000 apiece. That's what he wanted. He's got canceled checks. He says, I can't dispute it, I wrote the checks for him, here they are. He subplotted them, replotted them, so $50,000 worth of value, got an assessment on them, and they said those lots are worth 35,000. He said, cool. Got a letter a couple weeks later, said, but we're gonna revalue them at 25,000. Wait a minute, you got 50,000. You already reduced it to 35, now you're telling us 25. He's going, yes, all the way to the bank, I won. We're not, we're not there. You have a tough job, I understand. And I feel for you, I'm glad I'm not in your business, but, uh, anyway, it's things to address, and I, I'm more than willing to help any way that I can, do what I can. But that's what we're up against, and that's what, uh, that's why I'm here today. So don't know what, I don't have a solution is the problem. I come to you with a problem, but without a solution.
Well, but, what, what I think, though, is, is that this overvalued, undervalued list at least gets away, uh, from those exceedingly high values to start with in 2015, that I think everybody agrees we're an error. Um, so I think this is a step in the right direction.
At the 80 cents.
At the 80 cents, yeah. Because this has, this has the 400-some-odd, uh, parcels that all fit that, that category, rather than, uh, those that were, uh, uh, those that took the step of, of filing a protest. I think there are about 140 or 50 of those.
There was, there's, just for record, there's about 800 lots in that area.
Okay.
So by quadrant, there's the 200 of them that nobody's got a dog in the race. They can't argue at all, 'cause we've seen those lots sell for 25,000. That's a real black-and-white deal for you, so those are off the table, so that's good.
You got, you got two questions. Commissioner Boyle.
Mr. Buehl, are, are you a member, elected member of the SID?
I'm the chairman.
You're the chairman, okay. Uh, what, what is your mill levy?
You know, that's a number I should be able to tell you right off the top of my head.
Yeah, you should.
Yes, I should, and I can't. I can't give you an honest answer to that, Mr. Boyle.
Well, that's the problem. The way SIDs work is that when you form an SID, uh, you're supposed to pay for the improvements.
Right. I can't tell you that our mill levy, I can't tell you the exact number on what that is. I can tell you that they keep telling us that we're in line with everybody else, that we're not terribly higher than Lynn and Estates.
I think you're terribly lower.
No, we are not. We're, we're...
Well, you don't have your figure, so...
Um, I, I would, I would hope that the county can pull that number faster than I can at this point, but I don't have that in front of me. But I'm, I'm told, because we kept arguing that, and that's our struggle, to keep it under that, to be as competitive as we can, because we have no...
Well, you can't keep it under. You have to have it high enough to pay for the paving and the sewers and all the rest of it. Let me ask you a question. What services do you receive in your SID from any governmental body?
Um, county, uh, maintains our roads.
Right.
Is the only thing that I, I could say to that, that I could...
Do you have a school? Does kids, any children there that go to school?
Yeah, there's, there's some that do, yeah.
Do you think you're paying your fair share? I mean, you...
Yes, yes, we truly are.
Really?
I mean, yeah.
20 cents a, 20 cents a foot?
On the unimproved lots.
Yeah. Is that normal?
For areas, if there were areas that were comparable for...
Well, how long, how long's it been at 20 cents a foot? How many years?
Couldn't tell you. Long, long time.
Well, I mean, when you started talking, I'll tell you the truth, I thought you were from Kingslake.
Yeah, everybody does. You know, and we're in the middle of the city.
I'm trying to figure out where you are. I asked Mr....
138th and Burdette, or 138th and Blondo. Let's go, 135th to 141st, Blondo to Corky.
Oh, that's a good area. I don't know what's going on.
It's a wonderful, it's, it's been there for, we moved there in 1959. First residence there.
Who's, is, are, are the residents in charge of the SID, or who is all this 5709F and all this stuff? Who, who is that?
I'm sorry, who's...
There's a whole bunch, am I, 135th and Patrick, is that you?
135th...
I've got a list in front of me, and I, it's not...
135th and Patrick could be, because 135th is a dividing line. So it, it may or may not be, depending on what the actual address is. The SID was only formed, uh, 12 years ago?
Yes.
Out of the last 50? So in the last 12, we formed this. When we formed it, just before the housing bubble burst, everything failed beyond that. We're just coming back now. We've built, we've, there's about, little over 40-some homes built in that area. Uh, now, new homes that are in there, in total, we're probably, uh, around 120 or 130 lots. Uh, again, I, I'm embarrassed to tell you, I can't give you an exact mill levy rate, but I know that's one that our fiscal agent and our attorney, Bob Huck was our attorney for the development of this, John Keel's our fiscal agent. We rely heavily on them, and we've taken everything to the max as far as charging everything we can to recover. We've actually had to, uh, file bankruptcy because we couldn't cover our note.
Yeah.
We are gonna repay our note in full, in time. We had to ask for extensions from our creditors to do that, with the housing turning around and things under development. That's why I was excited to tell you that we have six houses being built. That's a boom for us.
Well, the, the thing that comes to mind is the Knolls Golf Course, which is, I don't know where it is in relation to you, but...
Northeast of us, about a mile and a half.
Okay, well, they, they have the same problem, and the, the city had done things like, uh, asked, told them to build a clubhouse, which they did, and added to the debt. And the SID board, um, was not, uh, did not raise its levy to cover the cost. And the city, I think, probably told them years ago that we'll pay for the rec, the house, the recreation center, but then they didn't. And so, the SID, uh, the Omaha National Bank, remember them, came over and they wanted to be bailed out, and, um, we didn't bail them out. We said, you have to raise your mill levy, and they did. And, um, the president of the Omaha National Bank got fired over it. So I mean, it's, I, frankly, let me put it this way. From what I've heard today, I think this is your problem. I think you need to raise the SID taxes, uh, and you don't know what they are. I think the SID taxes need to be raised substantially so that the improvements can be put in. The, the sidewalks and the streets and the streetlights and all the rest of it. You got the water already. Uh, I think that's what you need to do.
The fiscal agent won't loan us the money to do it. It's not a matter of, of those rates, and part of the reason for that, the way this had to be structured, because it's so odd that the other three fourths of the area are paying for the financing of the first area in our taxes. That's why our, our, our mill levy rates are essentially the same as Lynn and Estates. How can we, on gravel roads, charge a higher mill levy than no one will ever build?
Why aren't you raising the levy on the people who have the unimproved lots? Either, you know, the thing is, either they get in or they get out. If they can't afford it, they'll sell it. But the point is, then, then the SID, I think, would be developed.
That was part of the structure before I was in place.
Yeah.
I haven't been there, I wasn't there during the initial structure, and it was a complaint that I had. And the original people that put it together, because I said the same thing. This cost should be borne by everybody. It should be borne on a square-foot basis, on every lot that's out here. And the contention of Mr. Huck, who was fabricating this, and our engineer and everybody involved, said, no, if you put those lots, if you value them too high, nobody's gonna buy them. And I said, but I'm gonna force people to sell them, so somebody will buy them. The structure was in place, so I didn't, I didn't create it.
Each individual homeowner or property owner will have to decide whether they wanna pay the taxes. If they don't, then they file bankruptcy, or they try to sell the lot. And that will spur development, I think. But I think you have the responsibility, SID. You're the ones who wanted to do this, so you're the ones that are gonna put in the streets. That's the way it works. Streets and all the improvements, and it's, it's not Douglas County's responsibility to do that, or to give you a break on taxes so you don't have to do it. You need to raise your mill levy substantially to pay for those improvements in the areas that's gravel roads or whatever they are. I mean, I just don't have any sympathy for the SID. It needs to get its act together.
If, if it was only based on mill levy, it'd be one thing, but it's not. We have to have private funding to do it, and we can't have, there's no fiscal agent that will loan us the money to do it.
I don't think you need private funding. I think what you do is, the board gets together and says, it's gonna take a, a mill levy of, you know, uh, 2 cents per 20 square feet, or whatever it is, or, and you're gonna have to levy that against the people who own the property. And then when they complain, uh, you know, I mean, that's what has to happen. And if they don't want, if they don't want the streets in there, then they need to sell the lots at a loss, or whatever it is, but get out of the way so the SID can develop.
And how about the, the existing people that live there that, uh, that can't hardly pay their bills anyway? The, the taxes are where they are. They need to file bankruptcy or walk away.
Whose responsibility is that?
Um, I don't know. They can't be taxed out of their home.
Well, it's their own, it's their own responsibility. When you make mistakes, you're responsible for your own stuff. Oh, God. That's my feeling. Don't, I mean, don't give me a frown like, well, no, we're not. We're in America, it's capitalism, and when you, when something gets screwed up, somebody has to pay, and it's not always the government. So I, I have no sympathy for your SID.
I, I wish the solution was as simple as you make it sound.
Well, I think it is that simple.
No, honestly, it's not. That's unfortunate. I wish you had the numbers in front of you, because you'd realize that it's, uh, we're, we're not on the same page here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Okay, a couple things. I believe these lots are right to the south of Champions Golf Course. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
I know there's a lot of, um, homes in the area, and a lot of vacant lots, and a lot of different, uh, style of homes in the area.
50 years' worth of building in.
So how long is the moratorium where you can't build on some of the lots in there?
That moratorium began in about 1975, I believe.
And it's still going?
Yes. It's still saying, they, they say that we can't, that we have to have sewer, paving. We, we have water. Originally, it was because we didn't have water. We got water, and they said, eh, we'll have to carry it out here, now you have to have paving and have sewer. I understand sewer to some degree because of saturation from septic systems.
But you have some lots that are fully, uh, ready to build on.
That don't have paving. They have sewer in front of them, but they don't have paving.
And there are some homes still being built there?
Uh, no, only on the areas that have paving, sewer, that have all the amenities. That's the only place that they'll issue...
And we're talking only about the ones that do not have the paving and can't be built on?
That's right.
And, you know, Mr. Goodwilly, you're welcome to answer this. Do we know when that moratorium may end, or is there an effort that gets...
Only when the improvements are made, is when the moratorium ends. On a segment-by-segment basis, if we do another block, if we install, if we can get a loan to put in the paving, and basically, there's some block areas that we have to put in a sewer line and have to do paving, if we can get a loan to do that, so we can make that move, then those lots could be built right away.
Right.
And they would be released. The moratorium on those would be...
And we're in a very substantial market today, in a good area.
Right.
If you have the paving.
Right.
So what Commissioner Boyle, I think, was saying is, you know, and all of us have been in the position, sometimes good, sometimes not so good, where we try to get a loan and we can't get it, 'cause we don't have the income or whatever to do it. If you had the ability, as he was stating, to raise your mill levy, then the bank, or whoever, would look at that and say, hey, we can see that you can amortize this and put in your paving so you could sell lots. Has there been an effort to do that?
Through John Keel, it's worked very, very hard. We've contacted different developers. We, we haven't been sitting, sitting back doing this. We've tried to find alternatives. We've, uh, trying to say it. Um, the Abboud family was a major property owner in our area.
Are they still?
Yes, they are. They, they controlled, at one point, the reason that they did, the original developer didn't sell all of his lots. He sold, uh, there were probably 150 lots that he didn't sell. The Abboud family, Dave Abboud specifically, came in, bought those lots in the well system in entirety for about $60,000 15, 20 years ago. Um, he, those are the lots that he still has control over, those 150 to almost 200.
Where the moratorium is?
Um, well, partially, because the area that we developed, he had a good number of those lots over there, too. There's another segment that he owns, a big chunk of those as well. There's, now, that's the Abboud family that Mark Abboud is in, and there's, there's another, and we've talked with them, one does the real estate, and I, excuse me, but one does the real estate and one does the development, and we've talked to them about doing another entire block. Uh, because they've been, they've done several homes and sold, and they've been nice homes, nice quality, and everything's good. Nobody's got any problems with anything. So we're trying to push from that. Now, there's some new builders that we're making contact with. They're trying to make that next move, too, to bring them in and let's step forward.
Okay. And those lots today are valued at what, where the moratorium is? Forget the foot. I'm just trying to figure out what they are. 5,000, 10,000, a lot?
About five.
Around 5,000 a lot? Where the moratorium is?
That's correct, yes.
Are there any for sale, or 8,000?
Uh, there are people that ask for it, but they typically won't get them unless somebody... The only time it comes up is somebody, if an adjoining property owner, homeowner, somebody maybe wants one to have it so they can mow it and keep the weeds down, whatever it happens to be. But I mean, just as a lot for sale for, out in the, the middle of that block, people ask anything.
Mr. Goodwill, I see you're anxious to say something, but what's the, uh, what do we have? What are we doing on the value? Give it to me again, it's been a...
Okay. We, we, we tried to eliminate, our appraisal staff tried to eliminate, uh, what Mr. Buehl was describing as assemblage sales, um, to narrow it down to what we thought were the most representative arms-length transactions for these undeveloped lots.
Right.
And what we were seeing in the sales prices was about 80 cents a square foot.
And what would that be a lot, I'm sorry?
Uh, it works out to about anywhere from thirty-eight hundred to a little north of five thousand dollars a lot, depending on the size, on our correction list.
And that's what you're recommending today?
Exactly.
And what was it before?
Well, the, the original.
Last year or whatever?
Last, last year, it, it, it looks like they ranged from, just in looking at my sheet, between about thirteen hundred and about twenty-one hundred.
Per lot?
Thereabouts, per lot, yeah. There are some that are really small that were five hundred. Uh, so, uh, they had been there for quite a little while. Uh, and so, uh, I mean, tongue, tongue not even firmly in cheek, uh, it was probably time to review the neighborhood anyway. And that's what the last appraiser did, uh, last administration did, but I think the sales they relied on, uh, maybe were a little bit aberrational and it drove the value higher than where it needed to be. We, we think we're in the ballpark with this eighty cent figure based on what we're seeing in the market.
In eighty cents, let me just be sure I'm clear on that. You're saying that means the lots were somewhere on thirteen hundred dollars?
No, 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 no. Somewhere, somewhere between, uh, just glancing at the sheet, depending on the size, anywhere from thirty-five hundred to about seven thousand dollars, I think is the highest.
Oh, five is an average.
Yeah, yeah, five is, five is reasonable.
Right. And, and, and again, now I go back to my SID hat and we certainly agree. At twenty cents, I'm going to say it was far too low. Could we double that and make it forty cents? Certainly, I think I would love to see it from an SID to take in that revenue so we'd have some money to work with for our next improvement. Can I go to eighty cents and compete with areas that have full amenities? That's a hard sell to me. I mean, I would say at someplace, we're getting closer, but it wasn't twenty cents was the wrong number and I think eighty cents is wrong, but I think we're certainly someplace in between that number.
So today we're requested to support what you're saying on that eighty cents?
Yes.
And you're here to say?
And this will be, and this will be the whole group of properties rather than doing it piecemeal through.
And you're saying that you agree with his number?
I'm saying I think it's high. I think the eighty cents, we were at twenty, he's proposing eighty. Eighty cents is.
But isn't that going to help you, like Commissioner Boyle said, to be able to go ahead and do your improvements and start to see some activity where I know that's been that way for many years?
Exactly. Would it, would it really help wearing that SID hat? It certainly does. Is it fair and is it equitable to other, other lots in the areas and adjacent neighborhoods? No, it's not.
But you're here representing the SID.
No, I'm, that's what I was, the point I was making, unfortunately, I'm, I'm wearing three hats today.
You own some of the lots?
I own, I own my home and I own some other lots. I am chairman of the SID and I just represent the neighbors. So it's.
Did any of the other neighbors come down with you that own lots?
Yes, a couple of them here.
That owned some of these lots where the moratorium is?
Yes, right. Dick owns probably, Dick Wilson owns twenty in the moratorium area. Uh, Gary owns his house and his lots. He doesn't have any adjacent.
The moratorium they can't build till they put in streets and so on.
That's correct.
It's not improved. But isn't this, I mean, if I owned the lot, you know, I'd be thinking, hey, this could be a good thing because then we can start to do block by block to get some activity there where you're close to the Champions Golf Course.
Right.
Right on the south side of it, Commissioner Boyle.
Yeah.
It seems like that would help you get the development and some good activity going in there. I mean, that's what I'm looking at.
If it's any, if it's any help to you, um, and I don't know the exact rate in the levy, consolidated levy rate, uh, but if you start with a two and a half cent rate, a five thousand value represents a hundred twenty-five dollars in taxes.
Right. I thank you. I did have that number.
Okay.
Think you valued my lot at three or five thousand? No, I'm kidding.
Okay. We'll have to have Jack look at it because obviously if it's your lot, it's probably too damn low.
Strike that from the record.
Okay. Fair enough, fair enough.
Guys are brutal.
All right. Thank you for coming down. Um, and I'm not sure if there's other comments?
There are, but I've been, will make sure you were through for.
I'm through, Chris. Thanks.
Commissioner Duda.
Thank you. Uh, this is in my district. I have been familiar for twenty-some years with the plight out there. Uh, in fact, I'm good, bad or otherwise, I think I'm probably the one that recommended Bob Huck, uh, for you as an attorney to try to help you get organized. The, these people were not paying, th- this is the only SID that I know of where the houses were built first without an SID. And then you come along after the fact and incorporate into an SID. So, yeah, up till twelve years ago, these guys were getting a bargain, uh, tax-wise. They didn't pay an SID tax. There's no other SID around that was, was like this. But they couldn't bring the, the roads up to county standards. The county said, we're not going to maintain these anymore until you can bring them up to county standard. And they didn't have the wherewithal to bring them up to county standards.
Actually, the roads were brought to county standards back in the sixties and they were the county roads to maintain from the sixties until two thousand and five, I think, or two thousand and three.
Well, the county, I mean, I would make an appeal to Dan Kudelak and say, here's the issue going on. He would say, we're just doing the absolute bare minimum they need to get by. I mean, there was a while, school buses and mail vehicles couldn't even get through on your roads. I mean, you've got drainage issues. I know you're working with the NRD on that. They did bite the bullet twelve years ago and incorporate into an SID, trying to right their own ship. And I applaud you for, for what you did there. But to, to compare prop, land where there's a moratorium, where you cannot get a permit to build and say that's as worth, worth the same as land where you can build, they're not in the same ballpark. I don't see how we can compare one to the other.
Well, except that that's what people are paying for. I mean, we do have sales for that eighty cents a square foot figure. Somebody's doing it unless they're all, you know, drunk at the auction or have testosterone overload or something. I mean, in the, in the end, the essence of value is what people decide something's worth with their checkbook. And that's what they're doing. And that's where the eighty cent figure comes from. The other thing I would add is, uh, part of the reason we brought you this list is because it's got everybody, okay? Rather than just the hundred forty or hundred fifty people that had the perspicacity to file protests. And so at least part of the appeal of this is we're trying to correct the overvaluation of this entire group of, of parcels. And so, um, it's, it's very nice to sit here and say, well, eighty cents is too much and maybe twenty cents is too little and maybe it should be someplace else. But the only people that really, uh, would have a chance to do that kind of negotiation are the folks that have filed protests. There's about a hundred forty or a hundred fifty of those. And there's another three hundred of these folks. This is their shot at getting this corrected down.
And I did file a protest and I was pretty much told, don't worry about it, we're going to do everything the same, everybody's going to be happy. And then it came at eighty and I said, that wasn't what, you know, you asked what I thought it should be and I told you on the sheet. And I think I put down forty-five or something. Instead of twenty cents, I think I said, I thought forty-five was a fair number. And it, it was like, okay, thanks, but we're going to go with eighty. So, and now we're told that, well, your next choice, you can go to Lincoln, you can pay twenty-five dollars a lot and take the day and go to Lincoln. Chances are there, it's going to be a rubber stamp that if somebody, if the decision, the official decision was eighty, that's what it's going to go with just because I can wish in one hand and something in the other. See, I didn't say it.
Yeah, that was good.
So, uh, anyway.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Uh, I do have some figures on taxes that I want to bring up. The county's mill levy is point two eight zero five nine. That's what we charge. The city is point four eight nine two two. Your mill levy is zero point nine zero zero zero. Uh, you're not quite double, you're certainly much more than the county. I don't understand, you know, I, what I want to do is ask Bob Huck to come in. He's a great attorney that really knows his stuff, to explain why you have a mill levy that high. Uh, and what is the moratorium? Does city put that on you?
It's city or county, whoever issues the building permits, I would have said county, but.
City. Well, you know, and to me, it's a, a catch twenty-two, you know? They won't, they won't lift the moratorium until you put the streets in. And so you're, you're going to have to raise your mill levy and put the streets in. That's what I see coming. That's the way SIDs work. I mean, I just don't see this as that complicated. And it's, it does put pressure on the homeowners who are there. I agree. I mean, it's real tough, but, uh, it's called making life, some mistakes in your life. If someone has a bunch of lots in there and suddenly the, you know, they skyrocket and the taxes, uh, look at the family out in Sarpy County that they just got annexed and they're going to have some kind of a commercial property on the farmstead back to the eighteen fifties and their taxes went up about, God, I don't know, two thousand percent. And they're going to have to sell. So, I mean, uh, I mean, it's, I won't prolong it any further, but I'll just say that I think it's the SID's responsibility to raise taxes and make, get the streets in. Then you, I mean, nobody's going to buy a lot out there if you have, oh, I don't know what it's like. I'll have to fill my car with gas and go out and look at it. But, uh, I, I don't know what the improvements or lack of look like. So I, I'd like to lay this over and have Mr. Huck come in and talk to us about what this is all about.
Actually, Bob is no longer our attorney.
Okay. Well, uh.
Just add muddy the water even.
I don't know. I, I just, I, I really don't, uh, I mean, I think all the lots need to be assessed so that they produce enough revenue to put the streets in and the sewers because you're never going to sell anything out there without the basics. That's my position. So I support what the assessor's trying to do, but I think it ought to be expanded and to every lot in there.
Well, look, what we're trying to get at is, is what market value looks like. And, and we've, we've never tried to, uh, we've never been driven by generating some particular figure. And so we look at what buyers and sellers do and we set the value. Uh, the, the taxing determinations are, are left to SID boards or the county board or the board of whatever political subdivision, uh, is responsible for, for, uh, determining what that levy rate would be. Um, and so what we think here is we've got a fair approximation of market value based on the sales.
How many, could I ask how many lots are involved? Is there a number?
Um, six hundred. Yeah, we start, our list starts at a hundred fifty-one and it ends.
So you're raising, you're doing this.
It ends at, uh, six twenty-nine is the last lot we have for the Green Meadows piece.
My question is how many of these lots out of, out of the total number are going to be affected?
This, this is all of these that fit that category.
All of them? How many again? A hundred fifty-one?
Uh, we started with one fifty-one and I think the last one is six twenty-nine.
Mr. Boyle, this for, uh, just quick overview, there's about eight hundred lots in the total area. There were, there was a one-fourth of the area that's been improved. So roughly two hundred are off the table, so roughly six hundred are being discussed here today.
So all of them are being raised?
Well, they're being lowered from where they started in twenty fifteen.
Being lowered?
Yes.
Mine went from twenty cents to three dollars and eighty cents. So he's lowering from the three dollars and eighty cents, the thousand percent gain. He's lowering that to the eighty cents is the point that he's making.
Thanks.
Um, go ahead, before I, go ahead.
Is it okay?
Go ahead and then Claire, I'm assuming.
Oh.
I'll just flip you with Claire since you've got, go.
Just going to ask a question. If somebody went out there and wanted to buy some lots for the five thousand, could they buy some of the lots?
Yes.
No problem.
Yeah. Uh, I, had a lady, uh, called me Sunday that, uh, she asked if I would buy, or if I, if I knew anyone that would buy her lot for two thousand. And I said, honestly, I don't. I mean, I don't, I don't want it. Uh, she asked me if I would take it, if I would take it to pay the taxes on it. I said, honestly, I really don't. I mean, I don't, you know, I felt terrible for her. She's the second generation owner. She can't pay the taxes now. She got her big assessment and grabbed her chest. Back in her other one, you know, she's, it's closer, but she still can't pay it.
Are there any of them listed for sale right now?
Uh, there's, there's a few that are on and, you know, they're all over the board. Again, we have one, there was one that's going to come up that somebody in an odd area, that's probably one of the last areas to develop, paid thirty thousand dollars for a lot. And we have no idea who got to them or how they did that. It makes no sense whatsoever.
Without paving and the moratoriums on it?
Absolutely. And it backs up and it's the middle of the block and there was no logic whatsoever and we all went, what the hell happened there? We have another situation, somebody paying eighteen for a lot.
You couldn't help that lady who wants to just get rid of it basically?
Did I know anybody personally? No, we were just talking about it this morning because I said, Dick, you want it? Because I don't. I mean, do you want another one? Who's got twenty-five lots now? I said, do you want another one? She'll take two thousand or she'll probably take zero if you want it. But I, I honestly don't. Maybe one of you guys want it. I'll give you her number.
Um, yeah, have her call me. I'm serious. If you've all checked it, and then what I'd suggest is we lay this over and the latest we can do it is next week. We meet next week. And I'd put that into motion when everyone's done, if you decide that's the direction.
I'll second that.
One sentence. I take the lot, except I don't want to live in Claire's district.
Well, that, Commissioner, that, that makes sense. I understand that. But, but, uh, first, I, I would advocate that you don't lay it over. I think, I think we're on the number here. Um, and really what we're talking about is are we approximating market value, not necessarily what the levy rate should be?
Well, hold on, hold on, Mike. From what I've heard, did, did you move, PJ?
Yeah.
Okay, so technically what I heard, I heard a motion and a second. So right now, you're in a, you're in a process made already what I've heard that there's a motion to lay over, there was second to next week. That's what I heard. Okay.
But may I make, may I make one suggestion to you?
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure that's where we're at by the clerk's record.
Well, no, that's, that's kind of what I heard. I would, I would say first, I don't think that's necessary. Uh, but if you decide that's what you want to do, let me just add that the last, the last four parcels on this correction list are not Green Meadows properties. They are properties where, uh, we determined a correction needs to be made. And so if you were going to lay this over, they shouldn't be kind of caught in this vortex of Green Meadows mania that we seem to have here today. And so what I would advocate is if that's what you want to do, and I don't think it's the right thing to do, but if that's what you want to do, uh, I would, I would, uh, craft my motion so that I made a determination on those last four, six thirty, six thirty-one, six thirty-two and six thirty-three, and then do what you like with Green Meadows. I mean, these folks shouldn't be hung up by this.
Is it okay if I say something? What I'd like to do, I don't think there's any harm in laying it over a, a week. And I tend to agree with you, okay? I want to do some checking myself and if you have other people that are wanting to sell, I'm going to look around and double check this out. And they'll be glad to give you my email. So if you say, I want you to look at these lots and so on, I'll gladly do that before our meeting next week to check them out. If you email and say, hey, here's some lots that sold or some people that want to sell and try to gather some good information to come back and listen and make a statement then. And Mr. Goodwilly, if we do what you say, which I have some intentions to do next week, I don't think there's any harm in the one week delay unless Teresa will start to tell us there is.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. Um, maybe it's too late to be saying this. Now, one thing that's never come into our discussion today is what do our referees recommend? One thing that's never come into our discussion today is, what do our referees recommend? We're sitting in Board of Equalization. We have always consistently followed our referees' recommendations. Nobody's even asked what the referee's recommendation is on this. It happens to be at a fraction of what the assessor's office says it's worth. So for us to just say, okay, the assessor's close enough, we'll take that, shouldn't we at least hear from our referees as to what they think that this is worth? I, I think we're missing a big piece of the puzzle here.
And that'd be something we can take a look at during that week, too.
Let me, let me ask, uh, Teresa, Teresa has a, you want to come in?
Thank you, Commissioner. Teresa York County Attorney's Office. It's an unusual situation that the Board of Equalization is reviewing at this time. You have two different protests running on two different legal tracks, if you will. The one is the overvalued, undervalued. Pursuant to statute, you have to make a determination. The BOE has to rule one way or the other before August tenth. There's one more board meeting prior to that, that would be the August fourth. So in theory, you could lay it over. Um, I believe some of these protests are also set before the referees, and those are also set for next week on the fourth. The BOE under statute really needs to provide a ruling on each of the separate tracks, the undervalued, overvalued, and then also a ruling on any protests that are pending with the referees at the BOE. So it's not, you're gonna have to do a vote on each. For the undervalued, overvalued, you can only consider, by statute, the report from the county assessor. So on that track, it would, it makes sense to want to look at what the referees are saying, but on that track, by statute, you can only look at the report of the assessor and make your decision based upon that report for the undervalued, overvalued, which is before you today. You could hold that over, but when you look at it next week, on the undervalued, overvalued, it would again be just the report of the assessor, and then there's a subset of properties that were also appealed to the, the BOE referees that are also set for the fourth. I'm open for questions on that because I know that it was very tangled and confusing.
No, let me ask you, because my question, based on that knowledge, was, um, I guess with this new overvalue, undervalue thing, the rules have changed, because I thought it was this firewall between the assessor's office and the BOE at a certain time of the year. Um, basically now, I don't know who, I mean, but my question is, why should we approve it this week when they're gonna give a different value next week and we have to make a, make another decision? I mean, right now, it's, it's muddy enough to process and who has jurisdiction at this point. Why, why would we even do it this week instead of waiting till next week and let everything clear itself out? Because it seems like this whole, again, undervalue, undervalue issue is coming into the middle of a process that we usually almost put a moratorium on when changes can be made. Somebody put a moratorium on it, because I've never, in my period here, had changes like this come up during this period before the BOE has concluded.
Teresa York County Attorney's Office. It's a good question, Commissioner. This is the first year that the county assessor's office has availed itself of the undervalued, overvalued, which I believe is used in other counties, and it's beneficial to the taxpayers in that they don't have to then file a protest if the undervalued, overvalued corrects the, the concern that they have. But they're under two separate statutes and are running simultaneously, and under both statutes, the board is gonna have to issue a ruling. So if you lay it over, which you can do, you can lay it over to the fourth of August next week, you'll have to take two separate votes and issue two notices to resolve. I know it's perhaps something to consider legislatively, and I'm gonna look at Marcos. Maybe we want to make a recommendation for the next legislative package to sync those two statutes up, but at this time, it will require a vote on the undervalued, overvalued, and then also a vote on the recommendations for the referee. And why is that necessary? One, the statute says so, and then, two, the appellate process for the two are different. Under the overvalued, undervalued, if the taxpayers are unhappy, they can go ahead and appeal, and they would appeal back to the BOE. Under the pending referee recommendations, they would appeal then to Turk. And so the two legal tracks are different, they have slightly different requirements and slightly different appellate procedures. And so the board, if they lay over, you'll need to go ahead and take two votes next week.
The one thing, the one thing that, that this list will do is it will at least correct the values for those folks that haven't filed protests.
That have not, you say?
That have not. Yeah. I mean, you've got, uh, I think the number is somewhere between a hundred forty and a hundred fifty folks out in Green Meadows have actually filed protests with the county Board of Equalization. What that means is that everybody else on this list, you know, in excess of, of three hundred properties, have not filed protests. So one virtue of adopting this list is we at least correct those, because if we don't adopt the list, then they revert back to the original 2015 value that everybody had the heartburn with. So what you can do is you can adopt this list or, or, or approve this list today, and then next week, you can duke it out about whether you want to adopt the referee recommendations for the hundred forty or a hundred fifty that have filed protests or not. But at least you would solve, at least, you would at least make the value much more reasonable for those who have not filed protests.
So Teresa, let me ask you, we, either we do it this week or next week, and you make the two separate votes. For those that are done by the BOE, what prevents those by the BOE from coming back sometime in December or January and coming through the assessor's offices, overvalue, undervalue at that point, under this new rule that was found?
Teresa York Douglas County Attorney's Office. The undervalued, overvalued can only be done, um, on a meeting on or after June one, but before August tenth. So there's a window of time that the assessor's office is allowed to go ahead and bring them. So they couldn't do it at the beginning of next year. But I think, Commissioner, if you, as you consider the two motions, I think you will provide your constituents additional appellate options. What Mr. Goodwilly's saying is correct. The whole group is being reassessed because the neighborhood model was re-looked at, so not everyone in that group filed a referee protest. So when the board, be it, when this board votes on the whole group, undervalued, overvalued, and says yea or nay, then, um, they have an appellate process. So each of those individual taxpayers, if they don't like that decision by this body, could go ahead and avail themselves of those procedures as well.
No, and that's what, so that happens with overvalued, undervalued. If they go through BOE, they have to go through Turk and all the other stuff. This is my question, though. All of these, it seems like all of these properties that we are doing the overvalued, undervalued on went through the process last year. So at some point this year, they're coming up, and they're, the assessor's office is pulling them up as overvalue, undervalued. What prevents the ones that go through BOE from coming back next, next year around the same time, and then somebody making the case to the assessor's office, and they come back through through overvalue, undervalued?
I, I believe I understand your question, Commissioner. I think the assessor's office could do that. Next year, during the window of time that they're allowed to by statute, if they believe that a property was still over or undervalued, they could bring it back pursuant to that statute as well.
Okay. Uh, Patrick?
So of that four hundred and eighty some that you're considering today, about a hundred and forty some of those have been protested. And of those a hundred and forty, there may be some where the referee's recommendation is going to be different than what the assessor's presenting you today. So you have to decide, if you approve all of these today, which you certainly can do, you have to decide whether that should just be the final say on those properties and then deny any referee change that's different, because otherwise, you are potentially approving a value today, and the next week, approving a value that's different than what you just approved today, which you have to decide whether that makes a whole lot of sense. So you may want to consider just approving the, if you approve these today, then for these properties, that is the value. In the next week, potentially denying any protest that is diff, with a recommendation that's diff, that's different than what you just approved today. That would be the cleanest method of doing it.
Uh, Commissioner Newton?
So we have the referee's recommendation, which, or, or, excuse me, the assessor's recommendation, which essentially changes like, I view it as kind of the baseline for the whole SID. I mean, they, we can consider this blanket action for the, the whole portion of the SID, and I know it will look like we're disorganized to the taxpayers if, if we send them out a notice and say, okay, today your value is X, and then next week, we send out a value saying, okay, today your value is Y. Uh, that, that we've changed it twice i- in a week, but I still think that is probably the, the best way to go, uh, would be to go ahead and, and approve the assessor's recommendations for the, the change of the whole SID, and then we can come back next week and look at the referee's recommendations on the hundred and forty-four parcels that were protested and, and decide what, what we want to do with those referee's recommendations. So, so yeah, potentially, they're getting two changes in, in a week's period here. I'm sorry about that, but that still looks to me like the most fair way to move forward.
We've already had two, so it's just a couple more.
Commissioner Boil?
Well, I think this just points out something I've said for a long time, that the Board of Equalization is really, um, I don't know, useless, unnecessary. Uh, I asked the county attorneys several years ago, who has the authority for setting valuations in a property in the county? I asked the county assessor. And, um, that's why over the years, I mean, we can sit here and debate this like we control things, and, uh, if the county assessor, register of deeds, wants to set a value, she will. And, uh, it'll be after we get, we have no chance to make any changes. The other thing is that the ability for us to challenge a referee's evaluation is really nearly impossible. Several years ago, I raised the question of the Target store on Seventy-second and Dodge that had been reduced from ten million to five and got it back up to nine. That was one property out of six thousand. And when those come roaring in, uh, we don't have the chance, the opportunity to look at any of that property, really. All we see is a computer printout, the address, the property owner, what they, what they resussed at, what they complained about, and what was finally done, um, and the percentage of reduction or whatever. I just think, um, you know, we're, you know, ultimately, we should follow what the county assessor wants, but I, I really feel at a total loss. I can't believe that an area next to the Champions Golf Course and all the rest of it out in that area can't function. Something's wrong, and, um, it isn't working. The SID has failed tremendously in making this put, get put together, and the way you do it is you have to raise the taxes on everybody there, so I, I mean, regardless of how painless it is, I mean, it's painful for a lot of people. You know, in my district, I've got people, elderly people living in, you know, buying cat food to eat, and they get their valuations. They don't qualify for homesteads. I mean, everybody's having a problem paying taxes. So why are we saying to this area, you know, you can skate? I mean, I think it needs to be raised to the point where people say, oh my God, I'm getting out of here, you can give the property back, but the streets will get in some one way or the other. That's, that's my feeling. I just think this is a failed SID and I'd have no sympathy for it.
Let me say this, then, right now, for the sake of time, I think we've hit all the points. Um, there's a motion on the floor to lay it over.
That's what I was gonna say. We gotta take out that property, though, he was talking about, Mike.
Okay. Um, is there consensus among you all to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The last four properties on the list?
The ones that Mike said, yeah.
Um, to, to move the last four and to lay over the previous. That's what the motion is right now.
Yeah.
Okay, any other, no, seeing nothing else from the board, then, um, we're voting on the motion to lay over all except the last four.
Right.
With, uh, let's vote then.
Mr. Goodwill, or someone in the office can get to my email, I'll, I'll write it down for you, so you'll have it.
Give you a little piece of money.
Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a separate motion to adopt the recommendations for the last four, or is it all in?
No, we just did it all in one.
Oh, okay.
So you're good.
No, the motion was just to lay over.
No, the motion was to accept the last four and lay over everything else.
Where's Jason Abud on all this?
Everything from the last four.
He was.
Okay, okay. I just, I want to be sure I go back to the office and I-
Yeah, I'll do-
Tell our people the right thing.
And try to do the right thing.
With that, um, can I ask you, um, sir, sir, can I ask you, you all won't go offline and handle that?
I'm sorry.
If Commissioner Morgan wants to walk around, he can do that for that. Um, with that, let's go on to item D, application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles and recommendations for approval by the county treasurer.
Yeah, take care.
As a motion for D is there a second?
Second.
Um, everyone, please vote.
If I was smart enough to keep one around, I don't know.
Thank you, Beth.
Item E, presentation is the county assessor slash register of deeds, three-year plan of assessments. Um, you doing that, Mike?
I guess I am.
Okay.
Presentation, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office, Assessor Register of Deeds Office, I'm sorry. Um, presentation is probably too grand. Uh, by, by law, by law, assessment offices are supposed to do a three-year plan and provide it to the county, uh, Board of Equalization. Uh, I think we put it in presentations, because this isn't anything you have to vote on or approve.
Well, with presentations, you usually bring sandwiches. That's all right, though.
Well, maybe I'll do better next time. Uh, my point is, uh, this is sort of our roadmap, uh, for the next three years on the assessment side of the office. You're, you're free to review it at your leisure. Uh, we are trying to emphasize, uh, sales review and inspections as much as we can, um, and, uh, have at it if you like, because this is simply informational for the county board.
Okay. Um, let me, let me ask, uh, I guess since you're up for this, and, and I don't want to have a prolonged debate, but at some point in the future, this, this last debate has, has me thinking with this new authority you all are exercising on up or and down, it's not new, but it's the first time it's been exercised.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm starting to doubt why we're spending money on the Board of Equalization.
Right.
I mean, I, I really, that was because they can do whatever they want to do, and somebody can make the plea, case to you all, and you all can do the overvalue.
Well, Commissioner, I would, I would say this. Uh, the Board of Equalization is statutorily required, and you're always gonna have people that file protests. But what we're trying to do with this overvalued, undervalued list is, when we find instances where, you know, we just blew it and we need to fix it, uh, we can do that by coming to you folks and obviating the need for that taxpayer to file a protest. It isn't gonna make them all go away, and it isn't gonna make all the, uh, the need for a county Board of Equalization go away, and in fact, what you're also gonna see probably inevitably are some folks that, just to be on the safe side, even though we've talked to them and said, we're gonna take your property up and recommend this value, they may decide they want to file a protest anyway. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, this is a way to, to try and, and correct some values, uh, without necessarily having somebody, having to say to them, yeah, you gotta file a protest. So, uh, perhaps as we work our way through this in future years, uh, we may see a diminution in the number of protests, but I don't think you're ever gonna see, uh, the need for a board to go away, because even though we have sent up a number of these as overvalued, undervalued for correction, uh, this is in the universe of people that called us.
Thank you.
You know, there are people that talk to us where, after reviewing the data, we ended up having to agree to disagree. Um, so I don't think it's ever gonna go away, but what we are trying to do is find a way to reduce the number of protests.
I, I hear you. I, you know, we'll see what happens. I mean, it, it almost seems like you should just not put everybody through the pain of two months, just blankly approve and hire you two people to do a continuous correction, because that's basically what's gonna happen. But, and I'll just say that for the time period, I, you know, I figured there's some education to do on the point, but I see what you're saying. This, I just hope the debate was happening now. It's a lot of-
Well, there, there are always gonna be people-
There's a lot of power floating around somewhere.
There, there are always gonna be people that protest, like the guy who called me the other day. He was outraged that his property had gone up, uh, from a hundred thousand dollars to five hundred thousand dollars in one year. What he neglected to tell me, and what I had to look up on our computer, is his hundred thousand dollars was based on a vacant lot, and in the intervening year, he put up a house, okay? That guy's gonna be crazy enough to file a protest, and we're not gonna be able to make him happy through overvalued, undervalued, is all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, sorry, we gotta, Commissioner Boil?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner.
Uh, I, I'm just scanning this quickly, it's just, you know, I-
Yep, we're still in the three.
Is there a policy, uh, that the assessor has of, of the property taxpayers in the county sharing the burden? Is there a one-third residential, one-third commercial, one-third agricultural, or anything? Is that-
No, no, there isn't anything mandated like that. By law, we're required, uh, to assess residential, commercial, and industrial property, uh, at its actual or market value, and, uh, by constitution, agricultural land, that agricultural land is seventy-five percent of its market value, unless it's in special valuation, in which case it's at seventy-five percent of its value for agricultural purposes only. So there's a constitutional preference for ag land.
Right.
Uh, but no, there isn't any kind of quota that says of the total value of the, uh, the total, real property value in the county, it has to be made up of some percentage of each class or something.
Okay, well, it seems like, um, Grista Borgerson and I have talked about this in the past, that it was relatively equal, so that people who had homes, who had no way of generating income, uh, were not, you know, taxed on every improvement they make, and, and so you're living in a home and, and you have no way to get any relief, you're simply taxed at that, but you, if you're a corporation or a company, you've got several options on how to show revenue and how to get rid of, uh, some of your assets legally, uh, and there's all these exemptions and everything else that exists, exists for commercial property, but homeowners are, uh, I've got a word for it, but I won't say it, but the homeowners are really bearing the brunt of, uh, the brunt of the property tax, uh, costs, uh, in the, in the county, I believe, and that's, I think, I think across the state that's way. And anyway, one thing I, I don't know if, I don't, I always like to talk with you a little bit, but I don't know that the seventy-five percent that's a levy for the agricultural property is in the constitution. I think it's state law. I do want to mention-
Well, it's, it's, I, you're probably right there. What, what there is, is that, uh, the class of agricultural land is, is broken out to be treated differently.
There's one other comment I want to make, and I think Commissioner Rogers is absolutely right on point. This system that was pushed by Senator Campbell in Lancaster County because it worked so well in Lancaster of this early debate sort of thing, uh, I think is a huge success. Uh, I mean, it has, it has brought people in and they're able to talk and avoid all this other process of coming in. I think part of the failure, of, one of the big failures of the Board of Equalization is that, uh, we keep getting reports that forty percent or so of the people who file, uh, complaints get a reduction. And, uh, so I mean, if, if I'm sitting at home and in a few years I'll be totally retired and I get my property tax bill and it's too high, oop, I'll file a complaint, hoping that I get a reduction. And so I think there's a, you know, that's a problem, but that's not gonna go away. We can't address it. The final thing I want to say about this is that the county board, Board of Equalization has no direct involvement with any of this reassess, this assessment that's taking place right now in these rooms around us. We have nothing to do with that. The legislature took away our personal involvement, so that we're all sitting here, supposedly we're supposed to be citizens representing our districts and the rest of the community, uh, and we would listen to these people and, uh, make an adjustment based on what we thought was best. best. Probably a little inconsistent, as it turns out, but, so I think the board of equalization, with all these changes that have taken place, is really, as Commissioner Rogers pointed out, reaching the point that it ought to be abolished. I think it's a waste of money, and I think the assessor's office is doing the job it ought to be doing. So that's where I am. You know, I don't even think you needed to have this company, this guy come down and do all this stuff. If you think it's best, you do it. That's what you're elected to do. It's your office, you're independent from us.
Let me just say for the record, I'm beginning to question. I haven't crossed over to abolish, I'm questioning.
Well, I took it as a borderline abolish, so anyway, that's okay. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you. I'm assuming you stand for F, Mike?
I'm sorry.
Is that the personal property issue?
Yes.
Yes, I may as well stay.
Let me read then. Item F, grand wave of penalties and interest as requested by taxpayer for East Coast Customs, $10,000, California Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Mike Goodwill, Douglas County assessor, register of deeds. This is a fairly typical situation. This was a new business that we picked up in late 2014. 2015 is the first year that they should have filed a personal property return. They didn't file it on time, and so in June, we sent them a pretty standard, what we call penalty assessment, which is a letter that has a number on it that says, "Okay, we haven't gotten your personal property return. If we don't see it, this is the number we're going to use." It's a little bit of an art setting that penalty assessment number to not be outrageous but be high enough to at least get somebody's attention, and that's what we did. So the owner of this business, in addition to sending you folks a complaint about penalty and interest, also got around to sending us his personal property return dated 7/7/2015. He claimed $3,025 worth of business personal property, taxable tangible personal property. And just by way of no harm doing the math, at about a 2% tax rate, the taxes here are going to be a little north of $60, and because he filed after the 1st of July, his penalty is 25% of the taxes owed, which represents a little bit north of $15. I think sometimes, I think sometimes people think the penalty represents 25% of the value rather than the taxes due. That's the bad story of this. This is somebody that just really, you know, he filed late, and there's a penalty. In terms of you folks, statutorily, you are somewhat limited under 771233.06. County boards are only limited to correcting penalties that were incorrectly applied or incorrectly calculated. Since we just got his return, the penalty has not been calculated yet, and this is a no-brainer, you file after May 1, there's going to be a penalty. So I think the rationale here for asking you to do it is, gee, I'm a first-time filer. I didn't know I should file on time. That has some appeal, except a lot of first-time businesses are able to file on time.
Is there a motion to grant the request?
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes, oh, sorry.
This is something I've tried to get across to the people who put the agendas together and to your office as well. This should not even be on our agenda. We have no authority to do anything other than what the law says. You cited it fast. I tried to write it down, 12-17-12-something?
771233.
What does that say again?
It says people can protest their penalty assessment or penalties to the county board of equalization, but the board is limited to reducing penalties where they have been incorrectly applied or incorrectly calculated.
So we have no option?
Well, I mean, I suppose you could, I suppose you could say these guys shouldn't have gotten a penalty or the amount is wrong, but you don't have...
Can we say that under law?
What's that?
Are we allowed to do that under the law?
Sure.
You think so? I thought it said you're limited to something.
You're limited to determining whether the penalty was incorrectly applied.
But it wasn't.
Okay, so then you don't have to do anything.
So I mean, I just...
Well, these people don't know that. I mean, we tell them, but they file protests anyway.
You know what this is all about, is that we need to get your office to just make these decisions, and when they say, "We don't like it," say, "Well, we're really sorry." That's the final deal. We get these appeals to the county board where...
That's not quite what the law says.
Well, we have no authority to make any change. I don't know why these things come on our agenda, but, you know, and it seems, what are you recommending, the $15 penalty?
I think you deny the fellow's application for relief.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't know why you don't do that. It just don't even put it on the agenda. But anyway, I think the guy...
We didn't. The guy filed it on his own.
Okay, well, being unaware is not an excuse for not paying your taxes.
You're exactly right. Nobody's arguing.
I'm unaware that the speed limit was 35 when I was going 90. I was unaware, I didn't see the sign. So anyway, do, we ought to do, do what you want to do, is what I say, and try to keep these things off our agenda. I don't think they belong here. That's my opinion.
We need a motion.
I'm making a motion to do with the assessor.
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Duda has a request to talk. Hold on.
I haven't been getting much opportunity to talk. If the law says they have the right to put this on the agenda, I don't see the point in scolding people for following the law and putting it on our agenda, even though we're limited in what responses we can give. I would make the motion to deny.
There's a motion, there's a second. There's a motion, a second, seeing no more debate. Will everyone please vote? With no need for executive session, is there a motion to adjourn the board of equalization? Motion to second. And please, everyone, please vote on adjournment.
As soon as we can get it in here.
Okay. Actually, I have to vote on that. Okay. We'll now begin the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mr. Duda?
Here.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Borgson? Mr. Chair?
Here. Yes. Please.
I just want to mention, last week was Mary Ann Borgson's father's birthday, and I know she was at the trustees' meeting yesterday, and I know she's with her father today who's had a little bit of an illness, and just in a timely manner, you might say a couple of prayers for his speedy, good recovery, and I thought it'd be nice to just mention that and...
That's great. That's good.
Take care.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. With that, item A, medicine claims. A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, July 21, 2015, and B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, July 28, 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to second for A and B, seeing no discussion. Item two, consent agenda. There's eight items on the consent agenda. Is there, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Motion to approve. There's a motion, there's a second.
Second.
There's a motion to second to approve the consent agenda, seeing no discussion. Item four, citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment on any items that are not listed on the Douglas County Board of Agenda for today? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five and presentations. Update on the State Street landfill beneficial use gas project.
Good morning, commissioners. Greg McLean with Bio Resource Development, Omaha. Wanted to come in this morning and give you an update on our project at the State Street landfill. I can't recall the last time that I was before you. I think it was last year. We've made significant progress and are actually making gas from the landfill gas that's being produced at this time. Beginning in December, we began the project with the construction of a pipe, three-mile pipeline from the landfill to MUD at 117th and Fort. That was completed in sometime middle of January, and we had ordered equipment at that time, and the delivery times were, took us well into April when we started delivering equipment to the site, setting up, doing site work, and getting configurations set. Took us all the way through the end of May, and on about the first week in June is when we started actually producing the gas and treating the gas. So we made significant progress, spent a lot of money, had a few late nights at the site, but got everything up and running. And concurrent to all those activities at the site, we were also in the process of getting our approval through the EPA of our renewable fuel standards status for the generation and sale of the credits associated with the bio CNG, and that's actually still in progress. That formal process of review for the EPA didn't begin until after our production had started, and we're not quite 60 days into that review. And so as of right now, we're running the plant only intermittently because of the cost of operation exceeds the value we can generate until we have the approval for those credits. So full production will probably begin sometime in the next several weeks, but we have been able to actually get the plant up and running. Everything functions as it was supposed to and intended to, and so right now, we're just kind of tweaking things and getting things ready for the full production run. I would say, though, and this would be of particular interest to you as commissioners, is the county has received their full benefit from the time that we started. So we have actually taken over the operation and maintenance of the gas collection system at the landfill and also the regulatory reporting for that system as well. So that's the Reader's Digest condensed version of our projects so far, but I'd like to entertain any questions you might have and...
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. When do you think you will receive the regulatory certification?
Well, we hope we receive it any day now, but the EPA can take up to 90 days for the review. So I think at the latest, end of August, first part of September, would be probably the latest date that we would receive that approval, but we're hoping it'll be pretty soon.
And without the plant running, you're still burning it off? Or are you compressing it perhaps for the university art labs or something?
Well, the way that the plant functions, we take the gas out of landfill, and the gas has to be destroyed according to the EPA regulations and state regulations, and we are meeting all those requirements. So if we're not actually processing the gas and treating it in some way, then we run it to the flare, and it's flared as it always has been. At the times when we are running the plant, the process that we do, whether we put the gas on the pipeline or discharge it, we do the necessary removal of non-methane organic compounds to make it safe for discharge. So we're in full compliance with the state and EPA's requirements on management of the gas system.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. This really is an exciting project. I mean, this is the first methane recovery system put in in the state of Nebraska, and you would think it'd be nearing end of life, and yet you're seeing the opportunity here for utilizing this gas. I think this is just exciting. The pipeline you put in, you managed to stay low-key on that and didn't get as much attention as the Keystone. What was the size of the pipeline that you put in?
We were slightly smaller than the Keystone pipeline.
What's the diameter of your...
It's a two-inch diameter pipe.
Okay.
And at the site where we inject the gas into the pipeline, there is an odorization station, and so at that point, once we've treated the gas, it's essentially pure methane. It's 97% methane and, which is odorless. And so the gas is injected into the pipeline, we inject the same odorization, same type of odorization that MUD and other local utilities would use, so that when the pipe, when the gas is in the pipe, on the right-of-way and being transported, if there were ever any kind of a problem, a leak, or pipe was hit by construction or something like that, there would be the same type of notifications, and we have, we have all of the pipe operations requirements met by the fire marshal and everything else. So there's markers and emergency numbers, and all the full complement of operating requirements are in place for that pipeline.
I think this really is an exciting project, and I hope that you don't wait a year to come back to give us another update. I am anxious to hear how this...
I was just waiting for an invitation.
Please come back in a few months after you get your approval and give us another update. This is good news, and I love hearing about it. Thank you, Greg.
Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
I would agree with what Commissioner Duda said. I'd like to know if some of us can come out and take a look at what you're doing. I'm very interested in it, to see what you're doing. Is it possible?
Yeah, it is possible. We'd be happy to arrange a visit and a tour. I can tell you that it's noisy, and we'd like to pick a day when it's not quite so hot, but we'd be happy to do that for you.
Great, okay.
And I would encourage you to work with Kent or with Brian to, you know, set something up with us.
Who do you work with?
Ken Holm.
Oh, Ken Holm, good deal. Okay, we'll contact Kent.
That's the guy sitting back there.
Thanks a lot. There he is. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. There's no more questions. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much.
Look forward to the visit. We'll go on now to item six, and that's, no, well, no public hearings. Item seven, committee discussion and action. Item A is finance committee budget report, and Commissioner Morgan?
As presented.
Okay. D, you want to talk anything about next week?
Well, next week, I'm sorry, and Joe will be back. We will have Mr. Commissioner Kavanaugh the vote on the budget, and I think we're able to do that without mill levy increase, even though it's going to be a bit of a challenge, but that was a goal, and we achieved it again, so that's where we are.
Thank you. Item C, town new service committee meeting. Item one is a resolution approving the grant agreement and corresponding addendum in order to accept Sherwood grant of $335,000. This was held over from last week for the county attorney's office to verify, and they signed off, so I ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to second. Item G, human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service, which is attached. Seeing no questions, we'll go on to item two, weekly CAO report on staff assaults. Patrick?
There was one assault this week, had corrections. And if there's any, if you want to talk about any of the details, I can do that in executive session. No major injuries.
Okay. Item three, legislative issues. None being there, and unless somebody wants to go into executive session to talk about what Patrick said, we have no need to go. And so seeing nobody eager to go into executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. We are adjourned. Everyone, please vote.
Mr. Chair, there was talk about some legislative changes that were maybe referred to the assessor's office and their operation. Wasn't there some discussion of that a little bit? If you may ask, Marco to, Marcos to take a look at what was discussed and see if we can, should bring that up and discuss it as a county board, if you would.
Okay.